Welcome to the August 10th regular scheduled for Portland City Council meeting in the land of our beloved council chambers. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the Lord's Prayer and all your citizens for those serving and protecting our country.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Where the heaven that will be thy name, thy kingdom come; that will be done on earth as is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from it. Our whose kingdom, our glory forevermore.
Thank you. You're good to see you. Okay, uh, under courtly call or all?
Kate Belo.
Here.
Pat Novus here. Beth Gilman here. Roseanne Hickman.
Present.
Lisa Sabodian here. Margaret Phillips here. Jerry Trolle.
Present.
Council, you previously received the July 27th, 2021 regular meeting minutes, July 31st, 2021 special meeting minutes, and August 2nd, 2021 special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam President.
Oh.
A couple corrections, so if you can pick up and agree, then a motion approved is with the corrections. Minutes for the special meeting of July 31st, it could change gap to gave, I appreciate it, if you could change second reading to the first reading of Resolution 21-7. For the meeting, I'm sorry, for the special meeting minutes for August 12, August 2, did you change second reading to first reading of Resolution 21-8? And for the minutes for July 27, Economic Community Development Committee meeting on August 3rd, sorry, August 2nd, you change ordinance 1821 to ordinance 1921. Those corrections made on motion approved minutes is again.
Right, yeah, a second. Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Belo with the corrections as stated, um, the minutes, seconded by Ms. Phillips. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote the same as aye? Motion carries, thank you. Minutes are approved as stated on the corrective register. The chair notes a certification that has been made regarding compliance with the rules and implications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation or comment. Yes, I believe we do. I believe it says Tom Reed, 409 East Second Street. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, just briefly, the wanted to urge everyone to vote against the semi-change for the commercial property, uh, that's coming before you. Certainly support the, all the efforts of developing commercial areas in the city, so that's not the issue at all. And, uh, thanks for all the great work that you are all doing in that regard. Uh, it, it really comes down to the traffic situation on Fulton Street, and it's already seems like it's, uh, a bit of a safety issue there. A lot of accidents at Fulton Second, I live on Second Street, so I've been, uh, seen several of those. But just adding that additional burden of the commercial property, which is certainly going to bring in a lot of, uh, new people, traffic into that area, just seems problematic for that. So, uh, I can consider that, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Welcome to executive officer reports. Um, I just wanted to speak a little bit about masks. At this point, um, there's no mask mandate or anything, council chamber, if council would like to wear a mask, you're welcome to. We'll probably have to do this on a meeting by meeting basis now with our, I don't know how many, courthouse staff, so. If you like to wear a mask, you're more than welcome to, and CDC, if you're not vaccinated, be asked to wear a mask. Then we have new ordinances, um, 22-21 is, our first reading type, is time sensitive and needs to be passed on its first reading. Ms. Shanker will talk about that during her, um, time and explain. We have another new ordinance, 23-21, that will be assigned to finance and, uh, for administration, that's to go the full three reads. Um, that is all I have. Here's my air.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, if you couldn't find anything to do this weekend, I don't know what you were doing. It was an amazing, amazing time. We, of course, we said goodbye to the national matches for yet another year. Um, several thousand folks from all over the United States traveled to Port Clinton and enjoyed themselves. I had an opportunity to speak with, with quite a few of them, uh, from many different states. They are, many of them I talked to are repeat customers to the Port Clinton area, and they wanted me to extend a thank you to everyone in this room and the community for the things that are happening, um, around and about town. They, they definitely saw, and again, they weren't here last year, so they were basing everything on, on 2019 experience, and they were very, very pleased at, at what they saw. You know, the Arts in the Park took place, that, that Lakeview Park for a two-day event. Again, it looked like it was one of the biggest arts in the parks, there, there were people everywhere for that. Congratulations to the folks that put that on. The Portland Chamber of Commerce, Jerry Lippis Car Show, uh, again, another one of those things that was bigger and better than, than it's been in the past years. If you didn't get a chance to get down there, uh, there was a vehicle parked basically in front of the VFW that had its own canopy over top of it, it was a million dollar car. And, uh, one of the first Ford high-performance supercars, um, so that, that was, I'm not a car guy, but that was really cool to see. PC Plaza, where Slater's and then down to, to Little Mike Bassett Store, and then, uh, in the back, they had an opening, a grand opening, open house, um, very well attended. Of course, the, the beach, uh, has been all summer long, was, was packed, but not only with the sunbathers. As many of you know, my daytime office is across the street at the R. S. Hidden Suites, and every morning I'd meander out onto the front porch and have my iced tea, and it just happened Saturday morning, I'm having my iced tea and eating a donut, and I look across Waterworks Park and I see people doing burpees and running on the sand, and I, so the, the fitness group in town was out there, uh, working out as I'm sitting on the front porch eating a donut, so that was really, really neat to see. On Saturday afternoon, or sorry, late Saturday morning, the Art Garage had the, the opening for their first professional exhibition. Eddie Adams, who's a world famous photographer from the Civil, the Civil War, from the Vietnam, that would be impressive, that would be impressive if he was here, you know, he could have sold tickets to that one. Uh, from the, from the Vietnam War was, uh, his display is there, it's on loan from the city of Dublin, Ohio. Uh, it's going to be open to the public on various times, Wednesdays, Wednesdays through Sundays, up until November 17th, and I would encourage you to go to www.gpcac.org, Greater Portlandary Arts Council, which is the, the letters, dot org, to check out the times. If you're not familiar with, with Eddie, and I certainly wasn't, you're certainly familiar with one of his most famous pictures taken during the Vietnam War. It's a little graphic, and my apologies, I'll pass this around, but this is the picture that he is most famous for. It's a South Vietnamese general executing a suspected North Vietnamese individual. I'll let you pass that around. Um, his other pictures aren't certainly to that nature, but Vietnam era was a little before my time, going in 1971, but, but it was, it was something, especially hearing the stories of, of those that served in the Vietnam War and Vietnam era. My father served in the Vietnam era in the Air Force, didn't go to Vietnam, went to Southern Italy, uh, but, but it was, it was, it was impressive to hear what they had to say. Also, on that same note, with the Art Garage, uh, this coming Saturday, from 6:00 to 3:00, there's a, a live, in-person and online art auction to help raise funds to, to rehab the Art Garage. Tr- Tasting Transformations is the name of that. You can get, you can get more information on the Greater Portland area Arts Council website. Mom this weekend was probably the business biggest crowd that I've seen, and I know I saw Mr. Colston down there. It, it was amazing. To put everything in perspective, you know, Mom and Mora were just kind of a, a wedding bait in heaven, if you wanted to say it that, had nothing to do with one another, but they kind of grown off each other, and, and Mora is organized and coordinated through the Main Street organization. They buy the cups, sell the cups to the, the various vendors downtown to allow people to go outside. When that first started in October of, of 19, the goal for the first year was to sell 20,000 cups. Last year COVID happened, of course, Mom appeared. In the first three weekends, uh, of Mom last year, 17,000 cups were sold, and at the end of the, the calendar year, just under 80,000 more cups were sold. And for every cup that sold to the, the bars and restaurants, a small portion of those funds go back into the kitty for Main Street, um, so they were able to raise several thousand dollars to buy benches and planters, and, and again, reinvest and build that in our, in our downtown. As of earlier today, 70, more than 77,000 cups have been sold this year, and they just placed an order for another 30,000. So, the congratulations, council, you were instrumental in, in voting to get that, that program going. Um, it's, it's just another positive thing happening in our downtown to reinvest in ourselves. To put everything in perspective, the very first year that Hensville in Toledo had their Dora, uh, they sold around 100,000 cups. So, we're, we're right in part with what's, what's happening in Toledo. Formerly known as the, the Special Olympics Torch Run, it's, it's now being called Public Safety and Athletes, they're coming back into town this Sunday. Uh, they will, as, as a group, leave North Jefferson Street at the Blue Canopy aboard first responder boats, head over to Port, head over to Putten Bay at about 1:00. They're expected back in Port Clinton at about 4:30, and the, the public is certainly welcome to attend that. Um, all the fire departments in the area, all the law enforcement community from the area have all been invited. Again, they'll probably line the east bank of, of, uh, the Portage River, there, the hoses shooting out over the water, there is the potential that a Black Hawk helicopter from Detroit Coast Guard will be here to escort the, the boats as they come back. So again, that's a really, really neat, they'll, once the, the folks land back on the mainland, they'll take a loop through Waterworks Park, around the lighthouse, and then they'll have a, a meal at Mom, uh, about 5:15, 5:30. But again, they'll land, estimated time back in Port Clinton at the Blue Canopy, 4:30 on Sunday. Mr. Colston and I had an opportunity to participate in something called Out and About Columbus. Um, Mike Kilborn, who's a, a reserve police officer for the Portland Police Department, is also an anchor for WSYX and the, the Fox affiliate, or UP affiliate down in, in Columbus. He comes to town periodically and will film these segments. It's going to be broadcast in Columbus this weekend, as soon as it's released, we'll get that up on our, on our website. He talked to several different businesses throughout the area. Our conversation was about Mom, Mora, the beach, and the, the investment in our downtown that's happening. You'll begin over the next week to 10 days to see activity in the Wetlands area. The US Army Corps of Engineers is coming back to work on some of the issues that, that happened during the, the storm of Memorial Day weekend with the anticipation of putting in the plantings that were supposed to be done in the spring, this fall, and, and start that whole multi-year process, get that back on track. Again, I've mentioned it several times, but, uh, another topic that's coming up, the, the walkway on the east bank of the Portage River. Again, thanks to Mr. Belo, who spearheaded this one. Uh, they're about ready to put shovels in the ground, you should again expect to see equipment starting to appear around Labor Day weekend, uh, with constructed and construction anticipated to be finished, uh, in, in May of next year, weather permitting, through the winter. Earlier in the spring, Mr. Colston and I were approached by the Boy Scout Troop 360 here in Port Clinton. Uh, as you may know, for years, the Boy Scouts have had a, a campout over at Commodore Perry Memorial, at Putten Bay. COVID got in the way, construction got in the label again, there's construction over there, so they said, hey, can we have it in Port Clinton? Uh, we met with, with the, the folks yesterday on the final planning. They're expecting in the neighborhood of 500 Boy Scouts to camp out September 10th to 13th, uh, excuse me, 10th to 12th, 10th to 12th, at Waterworks Park. You may have noticed a large pile of wood that's accumulating in the high ground area. A few weeks ago, there was a really strong storm, not in Memorial Day, but, you know, a real strong storm. For some reason, that's a whole bunch of trees down along the Portage River, and they floated down the river out into the lake and all washed up on our beach. Luke Johnson and, and the crew, city crews, have collected all of those, uh, were trying to figure out a way to dispose of them, several thousand dollars to take them to the landfill. Um, so, believe it or not, the fire chief said, why don't we burn them? So, so the plan is that Saturday night, wind permitting, um, to have one massive bonfire that the community is invited to attend. Don't have an exact time yet on that bonfire, but, uh, just look for the smoke and come on down. Um, so that, that should be a really neat thing happening with the Boy Scouts. The public is encouraged to come and visit with the Boy Scouts, they'll have some information if you have a young one interested in scouts. Um, again, about 500, 500 scouts and family for that, that time period. Again, rehashing some of these, these old things, but August 22nd, the Mud Hens, again, Port Clinton Day at, at Fifth Third Field, two options for tickets, you can contact the Jet Express for tickets and a ferryboat ride, 419-732-2800, 732-2800. There will be golf carts available at the dock in Sandusky, uh, to take you the, the six blocks to, uh, Fifth Third Field. They'll be working on tips.
That's a long line.
If you're going to Sandusky, you're on the wrong boat. I just said that right now. So, yeah, it's a long golf cart ride. To take you, they'll, they'll work for tips alone, and then they'll be there to bring you back to the boat. Of course, you can certainly walk the, the six blocks. Or if you just want tickets alone, if you want to drive yourself up to the, the field, not Sandusky, but Toledo, you can call the Mud Hens directly at 419-725-4367. Again, 419-725-4367. Earlier today, uh, a conversation with Kelly Frymarket at the Jet Express, they have about, uh, let's see, 225 tickets sold for, for the boat. They are anticipating a large number of folks coming, uh, over the next couple of weeks to buy tickets, they will run a second boat if needed, so, uh, keep that in mind. August 30th is the first day of school, so keep in mind, you might start seeing kids running around, buses will be out there that day. And along with first day of school, of course, fall sports, we were talking about soccer earlier today, playing in this heat. Um, of course, the Redskins football kicks off a week from this coming Friday at home, August 20th versus Bellevue. And I had the opportunity to, uh, meet up with the, the mayor of Oak Harbor, Quentin Smith, and then we renewed our, our annual wager, friendly wager, on the October 22nd, Port Clinton, Oak Harbor Football Game, where the, the losing mayor has to pay and feed the, the seniors for the other team. Fortunately, it hasn't worked out for me the past couple of years, but I always have high hopes on that one. So, that was sports?
Mr. Merrick? If you need to deal with Quentin Smith.
Or Quin- Quentin Badcock. Quentin Smith is from Sandusky, Quentin Badcock is from Toledo, right? We gotta just have an outline. So that was, that was sports, we'll turn it over to weather, Mr. Colston.
Okay, well, thank you. Auditorium, you have anything to follow that?
It's hot.
Do you have anything, like, treasures up here? Law Director?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so we do have an ordinance that is time-sensitive, um, and as we all know, um, our community, along with the other communities, have been hit hard by the opioid epidemic, heroin and other opioids. So, the Ohio Attorney General and other local governments, um, they engaged in litigation against the, uh, top three, um, big pharmaceutical, um, companies, um, in order to basically sue for the damage that they caused for their misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance, basically, for their negligence in just distributing opioids, um, to people who probably didn't need them. And, um, they did come to a settlement, um, there was a national opioid, um, agreement that, um, was settled on July 21st, 2021, and then there was a Ohio One subdivision settlement, um, that came shortly thereafter. The Ohio Attorney General reached out to the county, cities, townships, villages in Ohio on August 3rd, and requested that, um, everybody who wanted to participate in receiving, um, funding from this settlement to pass, um, either an ordinance or a resolution stating that, um, they would like to execute the participation agreement, which, um, in our case, um, the Safety Services Director would do, and, um, also, um, the ordinance, which is ordinance 22-21, um, the Ohio Attorney General provided a sample ordinance, so they're all pretty much identical. Um, and basically, by participating in this, um, settlement agreement, the city of Portland, um, stands to receive money from, um, the state of Ohio, and it's going to start off with us receiving approximately $20,000, um, this year, and then there's going to be more, um, to come, and it just depends on who participates, and then they'll, they'll continue to distribute the money until, um, there is no additional money. And basically, um, the purpose for this money is to promote, um, the use in, um, abating the opioid epidemic, um, through Ohio. So, um, there's a very long list of things that, um, the city can use this for, um, education, um, for, you know, our, to help us, um, help, um, stop, educate, um, anything with this opioid epidemic. So it's really, um, something that would benefit the city. Um, they've already allocated, um, money to every county, city, um, village and township based on size, um, and there's a, there's a lengthy list, um, on, um, Ohio Attorney General website, of who, who gets how much to start off with. And since, um, there is an August 13 deadline, um, everybody right now is scrambling to get this, um, so therefore does need to pass on the first reading, um, and I think that's pretty much it. Does anyone have any questions? That's all I have, Madam President.
Move on to security reports. Mr. Colston?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, as far as the H2O program, we're up to 67 people involved in that program. Looks like the calls have really slowed down, probably 10, 10 calls, I guess, a couple people still mad about it, and, uh, one was a renter, so they can't get the, go onto that. The other ones, probably four of them were sent to forms to fill out to send back in. So, it's been a fabulous program for the senior citizens, thank you for doing that. Other than that, that's all I have.
I have any council any questions? Okay. You want to committee reports? Mr. Belo, Finance?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee has assigned ordinance 20 and 21 pertaining to salaries for certain city employees, uh, because of the flurry of special meetings and other things that councils had, we haven't had a chance to have a Finance Committee meeting, but we will, so I discussed with the auditor, and he had no problem with tailing those and picking them up at the next meeting, with the intention of the Finance Committee with me between now and the next meeting, to take up that and then the other ordinances, like ordinance 23, so I'll make those motions when this is up on the agenda. That's it, thank you.
Economic and Community Development?
Yeah, I can talk about that, um, as it relates to ordinance 1921, the zoning change, the proposed zoning change in the ordinance, the committee met last Tuesday, recommended by vote 2-0, recommended council approve the ordinance as written today, I can speak about that when it comes up on the agenda this morning. Thanks, Madam President.
Mrs. Segman, Environment and Public Parks?
I think, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, Safety Services?
Happy this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Yellen, Arts and Culture?
Nothing, Madam President.
Okay. Correspondents, under Correspondents, we have Economic and Community Development Committee minutes from August 3rd, 2021. Does council wish to take any action as to the correspondence this evening?
No. I was going to do 37 correspondence.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Segman, to accept the correspondence as stated. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Vote the same as aye? Motion carries, thank you. Move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions, under third readings. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 18-21?
Ordinance number 18-21, an ordinance to approve June 2021, replacement pages to the Port Clinton codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 18-21?
Madam President?
Mr. Belo?
You go to retain the emergency clause on the ordinance 18-21.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll go.
Any discussion? Then I have a motion to retain the emergency clause by Mr. Belo, seconded by Mr. Troy, as to ordinance 18-21. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabodian?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Kate Belo?
Yes.
Pat Novus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 7-0, the emergency clause is to retain. Um, does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance 18-21?
Madam President?
Mr. Belo?
You go to approve ordinance 18-21.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Belo, seconded by Mrs. Segman, to adopt the ordinance 18-21. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Pat Novus?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian?
Yes.
Kate Belo?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 7-0, ordinance 18-21 is to write up. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 19-21?
Ordinance number 19-21, an ordinance to zoning two parcels of property located at 221 Fulton Street and 51, sorry, excuse me, 517 East Third Street, and amending the zoning map of the city of Portland.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 19-21?
Madam President?
Mr. Belo?
Move to approve ordinance 19-21.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Troy, discussion?
Madam President?
I have a couple of questions to ask, and I hope they're either Ms. Snyder or Mr. Colston, like, they're going to answer this one. If either of you talking of the two parcels question are located in a part of the designated community investment area? Is that the same as the revitalization area? Is it?
The CRA act, and then there's a community redevelopment area, which is probably what the point you're getting to, which is the.
Well, I'm trying, I've, I've done some research, and I'm just trying to determine what areas are considered revitalization or redevelopment. Doesn't mean what areas are, if they're just areas that are considered, because my understanding is something to be revitalization area, plus that it'd be made by a developed urban landlord, and I'm wondering if anybody has made that request, um, in, in charge of these properties.
They have not, they have not made a request, and I need a, a new conversation with them at this point.
Well, I understand, because that's done before in appointments, so that's why, that's why I'm asking the question.
And I think you're talking CRA, and that's what confused me a little bit, so I have some confusion about the emergency.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to distinguish.
I understand, I understand.
That's why I make a, that's why I asked the question.
If I can make a clarification, because if it is, if you're referring to the community redevelopment area, um, that must be made, that will actually come to, if a report happened, it would come to council for approval agreement, there would be school board involvement, that is, has to be done for any shovels to hit the ground, so to speak, so it's not necessarily predetermined by the planning aspect, it's more the actual reconstruction of your, your property, so to speak.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to process myself and ask a few questions.
And if I could, at, at this point, although there was a plan, a conceptual plan presented, that was not required for what they, and it's just, they haven't gotten to the official stage of presenting those, the plans yet, so, they could, but they haven't at this point.
And the reason that I ask is because of something I should. And the reason, as I asked, is because of something I saw on that tentative plan that would go back to one of these designations. And I thought they might be seeking those designations. And that's why I was asking the question. So aside from that, the only discussion I wanted to basically make a statement was in looking at the footprint of what is the general business area there in that location, which is 18 tracts, parcels. We're adding, we would be adding another two to it. One, I have absolutely no problem. It's one of the twenty John to Fulton Street. It makes perfectly good sense to me to go ahead and do that. The other parcel is one on Third Street, which is actually across the alley from a quarter that we're talking about, that block. So we're moving general business, or would be moving general business only into the new quarter of that block, Third Street, Short Street, and Fourth. And I have some predation of that, seeing what is original footprint possibly expanding. Now, normally, big block expanded. It's not in the downtown area, as you say. And it seems, you know, we really look at maybe a first standing.
Can you look at this?
I have, I have, what shows on here, I have on my website.
Okay. Those are my concerns. I just want to make sure you saw that. That may help. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Just going back to the 18 parcels, we discussed this at the Economic and Community Development Committee meeting last week. The committee approved the recommendation of council to approve this as written tonight. The 18 parcels that are currently listed as general business, businesses exist, though. Out of all 18 are Bell Mel, Gaver, Pat's Party Mart, and I think Mrs. Gagnon's property there. So out of the 18, many are still filled with homes. So it's not, I don't see it as a bustling business district. And I don't think it's certainly at capacity. So I think just because it has a general business designation doesn't mean that it's guaranteed to see any new construction or even add to traffic. So, and to the 18, I think that's relatively small. Mr. Reed? Right? You spoke at the beginning. I just want to talk about traffic. We discussed this committee meeting last week. You weren't there. But I asked the police department, how many traffic incidents in that part of the town? And their response was that there's not a disproportionate number of crashes, automobile crashes, or vehicle crashes that they would respond to compared to other busy corridors in the city. Like Perry Street, we're going with the curve on 163 up over the bridge, or on Fremont Road, as you make the curve onto Harrison. They tend to respond to an average of 90 to 100 crashes for various types of severity each year within the city. And that maxes out at around 114. So in just the 200 and 400 blocks of Fulton Street, which is Second Street to Fourth, just on the other side, just south of the railroad tracks. In 2020, there were just six. Five of those involved no injury. And one involved what they call, or how they categorize it, as a visible injury. In 2019, there were just six. I say just compared to the average that they respond to citywide. This year, there's only been four, fortunately. And all of those have been without any injury. So going back, I asked them back to 2016. In 2016, there were three. 2017, there were five. 2018, there were four. 2019, there were six. As I said, in 2020, there were six. And in 2021, to date, I believe there were four. And some of those included in the tally included just large semi trucks getting stuck under the railroad tracks there, which I'm sure everyone's okay. Those types of things happen in town where there's a big lower clearance and some truck drivers are affected. So on traffic in general, what I told the committee, and I shared with council when I distributed minutes for those meetings, is that I think any traffic issues that are really dire now should be addressed now. And if there's a serious problem, let's fix it. And the city's implemented traffic mitigation measures in the past. You know, removing some of the on-street parking there over the time, over a period of years. And I think we're doing okay. But if there's a serious problem, I'm happy to pick that up now as opposed to waiting for something that might happen. I think we have the city's movement to work on any traffic issues if there are today. So hopefully that alleviates any concerns. On the general business zoning designation, the baseline permits no residential use except if granted by a special, except, excuse me, except if granted a special use permit by the Planning Commission. And that means the general business designation would, all else equal, reduce the number of families and residents living on those two parcels, for example. So construction of multifamily dwellings, or apartments, or condos would require a special use permit. And that process includes several criteria the applicant would need to satisfy. And that's beyond council's reach or jurisdiction. So commercial use, businesses like stores, restaurants, offices, would only be committed, would be the only use permitted solely by the proposed zoning change. Anything further would require additional approval from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is kind of how we got here today because they recommended to council to approve the zoning change. So I think the potential for new commercial businesses there, the rejuvenation along that corridor is a worthwhile endeavor. Even if it's just, even if the proposed plan, the conceptual plan falls apart, I think if one new business, one new build, new construction happens there, and the only employee is a single owner-operator as the employee, I think it's worth keeping the door open so that could happen. At one of the earlier public meetings, people were saying, well, I think, you know, we're kind of maxed out there. There's too much traffic. I think we're at capacity there. Is essentially the argument that we're given. And I just can't believe it. I don't find that to be true by any means. You would essentially be saying to Mrs. Gagnon, keep your store as it is, now it will just close. Right? Your store closed. And some of the messages or complaints that we were hearing, and concerns from residents were anything more, any further commercial traffic, residential traffic, is just going to be too much. Apparently, the public safety agencies, the police and fire department wouldn't be able to handle it if one more business goes in there. So people who would argue that, I would say, well, then make sure Mrs. Gagnon's store never opens again because there would be, but there would be more trouble. There's going to be more traffic, which I think is great. But with the way that the, that corridor, particularly that block, has appeared over the years, it's really, as I think about it, I don't know how we can really get to know to get into the next step to see potential safety. And if there might be some physical improvement to that sector, bro. There's what?
There should be. No parking a distance from Third Street to Fulton Street. Because when I park in front of the store, I mean, I have to literally push myself against my van in order not to get hit. And so that's one way you could maybe, but a no parking would up to a certain point during that corner, in terms of control to be special during this particular.
So, I don't know, that's a current parking measure that we could take now to possibly improve safety if there isn't true safety concern. So for me, the potential for just a single building, which seems kind of low, maybe one commercial construction for one business with one new employee, one new taxpayer, for me, that's enough. And I don't see it as a safety issue. And based on my reading of what council's charged with, we have to find a couple, one or a combination of reasons to approve a zoning change like this. And I think what's been presented to us doesn't. So that's why, that's why I moved to approve the ordinance as written.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Madam President, I insist. I was one at the beginning, we didn't think very much of this because I thought it was too much on the whole corner. But obviously, the planning commission's doing some changes. I held off on deciding one way or another until the evening that you had the last special committee meeting to explain all the stuff that you went over tonight. He has the facts and figures, and that made a big difference to me because I am a person who wants that to figure. Don't just tell me you're going to do it. Show me what you have. And that's why I think I thought it was a good idea to get started on this and see what we can come up with. That's it.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Beal, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance 19-21. Would the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian? Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Dave Beal?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Ordinance 19-21 is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance 20-21?
Ordinance number 20-21, an ordinance revising and fixing salaries and benefits of certain supervisory positions classified as exempt employees of the city of Portland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action this evening as to ordinance 20-21?
Madam President?
Mr. Beal.
Move to table ordinance 20-21.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll as to table ordinance 20-21? By Mr. Beal, seconded by Mr. Troy. Lisa Sabodian?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Dave Beal?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Ordinance 20-21 is hereby tabled until the next meeting, August 4. Would the ordinance 21-21?
Ordinance number 21-21, an ordinance revising and fixing salaries of certain supervisory positions classified as non-exempt employees of the city of Portland, Ohio, not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, and replacing any previous ordinances referencing salaries for certain non-exempt employees and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 21-21?
Madam President?
Mr. Beal.
Move to table ordinance 21-21.
I'll second. A motion by Mr. Beal, seconded by Mr. Phillips, to table ordinance 21-21. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Dave Beal?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Ordinance 21-21 is hereby tabled until August 4. We have no second reading. First reading is, would the clerk please read by title and summary only? Ordinance 22-21?
Ordinance number 22-21, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Safety and Service to accept the material terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio mandarana of understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement and to execute the participation agreement toward the One Ohio subdivision settlement with McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, AmerisourceBergen Corporation, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action this evening as to ordinance 22-21?
Madam President?
Yes.
Make a motion to waive the three required readings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a question. By Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mr. Beal, to waive the three required readings at this ordinance 22-21. Any further discussion? The law director. That's Stephen Trolley. Would the clerk please call the roll? Dave Beal?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Free readings as to ordinance 22-21 is hereby waived. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance 22-21?
Madam President?
Mr. Beal.
Take a motion to retain the ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Segman. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hickman, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 22-21. Would the clerk please call the roll? Lisa Sabodian?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Dave Beal?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. The ordinance clause is hereby retained as to ordinance 22-21. Does council wish to take any further action as to ordinance 22-21?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Beal.
Take a motion to pass ordinance 22-21.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mr. Beal, to adopt ordinance 22-21. Would the clerk please call the roll? Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Lisa Sabodian?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Dave Beal?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Ordinance 22-21 is hereby adopted. Would the clerk please read by title and summary only? Ordinance 23-21?
Ordinance 23-21, an ordinance amending ordinance number 4-21 of the city of Portland and adjusting accounts within the city of Portland.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any action as to ordinance 23-21? Seeing done, ordinance 23-21 is hereby seconded on August 4, 2021. Will you give your stand, counsel? Ms. Beal?
I'll be seconding, Madam President. Thank you.
Mr. Trolley?
Yes, I was just wondering, House Beach Wheelchair, has it been used?
It's fixed. Yes. It's in operation right now.
So, I've seen it through and there. And Ms. Gilman?
Yes. I have a question.
And Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. The concession stand at City Park, I've seen open. People actually use it. The park is crowded, so I know that people are coming here. They want a little dust, pit stop on the way to the areas. Doing well, I think. Again, that will be done by the line.